Before we get started, and we'll call the meeting. And my rap is Alvaro Sio, twenty years member, the president of the president. And we have the assistant, Peter Kaufman, chair, Megan Taylor, and, oh, sorry, pleasure. And Michael Hodge is the audit, who we're going to make in the very end of this. I think we're in the year, so I'm going to set the question for the people in a few minutes. The first work is, have you, the second one is, is the minutes for, what is the, yeah, there was a last thing, yeah, no, yeah, it's, it comes from the works of project. So do you have any agenda or questions coming to that? Right, would you have motion to move somewhere, to move second, second by name? And so also, who took a vote on that, all those in favor, and he's not a lot of the postal, so, now, just taking care of those minutes, we're drafting the final, um, the, the next item of the calendar, if you receive, um, the, the ideas, this is something we proposed online, it's like a, when the, um, Jeff, I'm sorry, not when the meeting takes our, um, the one difference is that we changed the focus online, we were two days, we stayed for two days, the gates are just, um, and, so, any questions about that? Um, that's it, most of the information, and the question is, who had the words against the answers? Um, the next item is the request for a scrubber, um, to match our certified mail rate to the, because the increase in rates for certified mail, um, we were changing that for the well updates, because it's high, it's, um, that was, 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 um, and a couple of costs, I was, I mean, projections like, um, and when, when, as well, it was like, um, and then, once that's been put over, so if you can, once they're put over that, they're going to change.
If that's stated procedure, we usually follow the plan with the planning board, and the rates are up, the planning board adjusts, usually, if I'm just a do that, we would find, we would, we would, if that lasted, yes.
True, so that's, I don't know, um, but we don't have to, the, 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 the,[368.14]
I think to not have to build another road through the town. There's enough short roads. And so, I think that it's in the best interest of the town and and this quarter to to grant them. And so, I guess I can answer any questions that you have.
The question is, because of the construction committee, six acre locations being, um, I've been told now, and when you have some variance, it's to provide them. So just to make sure they do have to have four to six acres. So the map is 175.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So next, we'll get here. Yes.
It'd be easier if there was only one straight line across the block with this multiple ones I could look at. I believe the map is correct.
So the tax is 24.48. If I'm gonna make it 25 feet.
Well. So it would be a variance of 24.48. That was a good catch. You passed the test.
So you put it down there. I guess that's the test. Um. I still have another question with me. Um, for the reason we give for granting the variance is to eliminate the possibility of putting in any more house lots in the future. What is the type of subdivision you're going with? The possibility of simplifying, or not giving the future, and simplifying the earnings that it can do.
Want me to answer it? I think, yeah. So, I think the only way to draw up to do to do a subdivision like this will be to, because of the size cul-de-sac that you would need, and it's right in the location where he's gonna build his house. So if he was to build his house there, then he just couldn't put a cul-de-sac there and 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 I don't think he could do it anywhere else except for if the road was longer and put a way out in back. Then it would be a real long road and financially it wouldn't be feasible for two lots to compensate for that long road and the big cul-de-sac and all the excavation that needs to be done out in back there. Because there were some up and down hills that would have to be massive cuts in fills and wetline crossings. So, I don't believe it would be feasible for for the subdivision. Good for me. I think the question is, if the variance was going to end or split, you'd be left with 17 acres a lot, but it would be, if the question was for somebody to mark that lot.
Yes.
And, you know, and then they, or most of the subdivision we have, if you sort of work into two lots, could somebody simplify the 17 acres a lot? Well, you'd have to build the road again and 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 if and if this lot was cut off, then you'd have to move this cul-de-sac over. I mean, or if you get four lots then, or three, three lots. And then if you have to build a road and, um, and then the cul-de-sac. So what's the minimum, if that was a 200% requirement, that would be sufficient to allow, like, to simplify the, um? Well, then you'd have 50 feet taken off of that, so you only have 150 feet there. But on the new road, you'd have frontage, but I don't think you could. Yeah, I think by moving it all, you'd have to put the cul-de-sac way further back or get frontage enough for three lots. And, uh, but then, you know, the, uh, the, the ruling, the, um, sorry, the rule is, is kind of designed to limit that. And, um, we want to make sure go along with that and, you know, two houses, which is a good idea for that bank just that it doesn't come, you know, so making lots, something to buy that stuff. Well, I think in this case, as you can see with the plan, there are some stream flows through the back of that property and some wetlands. And there are some contours there, very, very out there. Um, and if there was more, instead of 17 acres, and it was flat, uh, every possibility. But in this case, I don't think there's any way, unless the rules change. Well, if the rules change, I can't say it would never be simplified again, because if the rules changed or higher density changed, then it would be impossible. My sense is, um, perhaps, I think, or else of the, or else of the, not to worry about this. I know that you should be around a gender again, planning, especially for us, for a while. Um, I could ask that because I was like, I don't think, I don't like that, but it did not be is that there's no intention of our planning board to assume that they get the variance. I mean, it would be, the agent specifically said it. If the variance wasn't there, we were very wrong with each other. The question, I thought that they understood that it was candy, but, uh, they wanted to get a comment that is a public size, uh, so we have to, um, um, it could cancel easily if we don't back the variance, but if we did back the variance, then it was quite, so if we still have to go back to the planning board, get approved from the planning board, we haven't got approval from the planning board. Okay, so you know, it's really an issue there, and so that you go back to, and we go back and go. Exactly. Although we got the planning board. So, um, yeah, that's, that's good. Okay, that was something that, um, I think, first, this is a little bit back to the, the land. I don't think so. It does go back. Yeah, it does go back. I can't even work. I don't see it on the map. I got a copy of the tax map if you'd like to take a look at it, and it's also under by property. Oh, okay. It was all available access from different links. There's another big pasture land between there and, uh, which 111. Oh, yeah, yes, 111, but, but, uh, that's a tax map if you'd like to take it. Um, and when was this lot created? When was the subdivision? When was the building, when was 173? Well, tech, he was after, what is that for? But this is, these are, yeah, that's still not, makes me think it was longer. Oh, the stone wall on the other side, I don't know what happened. That was it. That was a long time ago. Right, because it was, it actually, it's actually far. Yeah, that was, that's a stone wall that was there hundreds of years ago. But this wasn't something that you're allowed to, 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 to. Okay, so this is our, just, some of it. As you see, the stone walls on the east side and and the southerly side, pretty well established. Uh, there were some lots on the, uh, on Wanda Road, and this was a bigger property for a subdivision. Okay, so that's the thing we've talked about, the separation you did. That's very clear, thank you. Um. Yeah, turn up there today, pick it up. Um, with that little piece that sticks in there and it looks like it was becoming into that well location. As you said, maybe, I think, I see, see, darned, because it's not, um. So that was all, as you said, history. Yeah, because it gives you, and we got a road, but that's, you see the house. So you, you figure that's part of the, 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 something. That's kind of what I was alluding to in, in one of the frontier deals there. You, you, you wouldn't know whether there was a reference there or not, the way it's configured. Right. Right, so, so, um, go through to make a motion. Uh, Matt, yeah, we have to, um, go through the background for it. Um, I was, including the section.
I mean, I, I'm not concerned about simplifying and having, well, in fact, my concerns give you a, of that, and I, and your answer, and, you know, we could do that. I just, I'm wondering if there's any way to, we can get into, um, that vibrant experience that is conditional upon it. Also, the state, and it is on to the Bible like this, to keep.
Hold on, I'm not sure, because we may do that, we can do that. I've got, I think you can grant the variance. The planning board could put conditions, it would prove on. Because the, this variance is for the, how, the existing house law, not the updated, the 17 acres, yeah.
The decision on the request before us should be on the request before us. Where we can't normally anticipate what something might do 10, 20 years from now. And I understand you wanted to keep the laser conservation, but if someone buys a land and wants to simplify the other 17 acres and put, go to the expense of putting in a road, you're gonna have to go to the planning board and then make a plea before the CBA. Otherwise, but for us to anticipate what might happen, that's not really important, that, that, that location before us is.
And, and frankly, we could, if this was put on, too, thank you, um, not for future, not for, yeah, it's, it, that would be the plan here. If, if any conditions got out there, then we could, could be putting it on, because, um, there we come.
We put conditions on, if there was a stormwater, and you may have certain safeguards protected, the air outflow, or the surface of the earth. There, there are lots that you can, that's a roomy, you want to get sure, you know, conditions and, uh, but, but, but future, there's not anything we can do.